...to order at seven o'clock. Uh, this is a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
A motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
All right, any discussion, comments, adjustments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Could I have a motion to approve the ocean open session minutes of January twenty fifth, two thousand sixteen?
Motion to approve the open session minutes of January twenty fifth, two thousand sixteen.
Any adjustments or comments? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome, Paris. Community comments? Welcome, community. Any comments? Wow, okay, moving on, we are moving right along today. Student comments, Chris, it's good to see you.
Thank you, I appreciate it, just such a good community out there. Nothing that needs to be brought up. On January eighth, ninety-three students went to the Deca District Competition in Foxborough. All students did a great job following six students set themselves apart from the field of competition with first place finishes. Cameron Busby, Abigail Columbo, Connor Morfrin, Kevin Murphy, Drew Nelson, and Angelica Pachowski. Students won in the categories of travel merchandising, sports and entertainment marketing, and travel and tourism. These students will travel to the International Career Development Conference in Nashville, Tennessee to compete in April. Hope I make it as well. On February third, Nipmuck celebrated National Signing Day. The following seven students, athletes, from the class of two thousand sixteen have committed to play a sport at collegiate level. Kevin Hack going to Assumption College, Grant Jorgensen at Norwich University, Kylie LaRocque at Saint Anselm College, Ryan Orfus at Gordon University, Caleb Peavy at Assumption, Tom Spurino at Franklin Pierce University, and Amanda St. Germain at WBI.
Right?
I know, right? Four Nipmuck swimmers placed at the Division One State Swim Championship on Friday, February nineteenth, at Boston University. The Northbridge Coop Swim Team placed eleventh overall out of the nearly fifty teams from all over Massachusetts. On Friday, March fourth, Nipmuck will hold the second Twenty-First Century Learning Conference with the theme of Connected Learning. The conference is designed, sorry, to provide students with meaningful, real-world learning opportunities to connect their daily learning in Nipmuck's classrooms with their personal vision of their post-high school plans. And workshops, presentations, will be provided to students with opportunities for hands-on experiences. I really like that one. Are we gonna be dressing up this year as well?
We are, yes. Dress for success.
That's a really good workshop. That's what we got?
Questions?
No? Awesome, all good things.
Always good things, I know.
Excellent. All right, then moving right on, superintendent comments.
Okay, so, Lord, good things for you guys. First, I put information in your packet. We're really proud that within the last week or so we got up and running the FLESS program at the elementary school. FLESS standing for Foreign Language in the Elementary School. As a pilot program, an after-school program that's being spearheaded by our Spanish Immersion Coordinator, Katie Cardidron, and Olga Brau as well, as a kindergarten teacher, and also Lily Vasquez, who's also worked in our district. They are now doing a session for both third and fourth graders, one at Clough and one at Memorial, and then after that six-week rotation, they'll be doing it through, for K through two. Right now, we've got some very healthy numbers, in my opinion. We've got twenty-four students at Memorial, nine at Clough, but for K through two, we've got twenty-three at Memorial and fourteen at Clough. So, I know the three ladies, they will be doing some ongoing professional development with the team of three, but also for the entire Spanish Immersion team. And like I say in the background notes, it's very much pilot. I think what they're going to do is they're going to see the data, get some feedback from the students, get some feedback from the parents who are involved, and then build it even better. My second piece is something that we're really excited about, and that is our students' artwork for the annual Youth Art Month exhibit, which is being held up in Boston. So I know Alice has worked really hard, along with the entire art department, here, spearheading this. So, Alice, if you could say a few words about this.
I'd love to. So, we have, I'm happy to say that we have twenty-three pieces of artwork hanging in Boston, even as I speak. And it's at the State Transportation Building, which, I don't know if you know where that is, but if you get off at the Copley exit, go straight down Stewart, it's on the left. And it's a big, big display of about seven hundred pieces of art from around the state. It is hosted by the Massachusetts Art Education Association, and it's in honor of Youth Art Month, which actually takes place in March. So, this exhibit started February eighth, and it's gonna run through March thirty-first. The building is open from nine to five, Monday through Friday. And this coming Sunday, we're having a big Family Day celebration from twelve to four. Pretty exciting. The art educators in Menon and Upton are super excited to get the kids' work out in the community, and the children as well. Year after year, we do this every year, but year after year, we get, we're able to enter more pieces of artwork. And the kids come into Boston, it's a Family Day, it's a wonderful thing, and we're very proud of our students. Any questions or anything? Mr. Disorder?
I found out more studies.
Who's that kid?
Outstanding art. There it is.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah, and Melissa? That's your daughter?
That's right.
And me, I know your children have had art in the show, or similar show, yeah. So it's a great, a great event. All right.
That's awesome. Thank you.
So, I'll go from that, the pleasant, to maybe something that's not quite so pleasant. And I think it's a national issue, but I think this is something that we have to think about deeply and talk about on the local level. Saturday night, I was home, and I was watching the Nevada caucus in South Carolina, primary results. Yes, I really need to get a lie. And I was watching Donald Trump's victory speech, and he was doing his usual stick, "We're gonna build the wall, and we're gonna make the wall huge," you know? And one of the things that he threw out was, "Common Core, it's gone, it's back to state control." And on one political side of the aisle, so to speak, that's very much a talking point. But I think we need to be cognizant that here in Massachusetts, there actually will be a ballot initiative in November to eliminate the Common Core state standards, okay? It's technically the two thousand and eleven curriculum frameworks in ELA in mathematics. I think, as far as committee, Lee and Bill, being here the longest, I can remember back in two thousand and twelve, I think it was myself and Jean and Deb actually gave a pretty involved presentation on what the Common Core standards were all about, and how important they are, and how well researched they are, and how they really represent an evolution in the state's progression, and really thinking deeply about how kids rewrite, problem-solve, process information themselves. So, and not to completely be on a soapbox with this issue, but I think you'll find over the coming months, other issues will get attention, to my knowledge. I think there's going to be two ballot initiatives regarding the legalization of marijuana. Call me crazy, but that'll probably get a little bit more attention and press than the Common Core standards are. But I think with regard to the life of this school district and the life of public education across the Commonwealth, this ballot initiative is extremely important. And I think it's incumbent upon this committee, and I think as a district, in putting factual information out there about this. I put in your packet and part of the background notes some information from the State Department of Education as far as the whole vetting process, and the two-and-a-half-year process of the research and development that went into these standards and the approval process here within Massachusetts. I know that the State Superintendents Association very strongly has taken a position that if this ballot initiative were to pass and we would have to revert back to the old two thousand and four standards, it would be a significant step backwards as far as rigor and so on. I think also, part of the equation has to be just a very pragmatic one. I can say in the last three to four budget cycles alone, this district has invested, and this is a real conservative number, about two-hundred to two-hundred and fifty thousand dollars just in curriculum materials alone. You know, obviously, you know, this committee was involved eighteen months ago in improving our new literacy program, Reading Wonders. The cost just associated with that, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars for a K through four program that's aligned with these standards. Our writing curriculum, the Empower Writers Curriculum. Not to mention, particularly at the elementary and middle school levels, the trade texts, or actually even at the high school, that have been purchased to align with these literacy standards. So, you know, and, you know, as Maureen would attest to as well, our focus, vis-à-vis professional development, our focus on all of our curriculum activities, clearly, the emphasis has been on the set of two thousand and eleven standards. So I think it's just important to put it out in the public domain and to think about, as a committee, what can be done from informational standpoint for our parents the closer we get to the general election.
So, quick question? So, let's say this piece was to pass, and we were to revert back to two thousand and four, how would it impact quality of education in the future?
In my opinion, it would be a step backwards in the sense that the two thousand and four standards are not as rigorous in that they don't ask to the degree for students to go deeper in their explaining and their problem-solving and their synthesizing of information and so on. And I think, you know, the challenge, and I think our teachers are meeting this challenge magnificently, is changing their instruction, changing their assessments and what they're doing with the kids on a day-to-day basis to get them to that higher-order thinking. So, you know, do I think our teachers would adapt? Yes, but I think it would clearly be a step backwards.
So, another way of saying that, would it, it would actually reduce the, I'll call it, competitiveness of our students in the collegiate atmosphere?
Correct.
And kind of post-graduation situations? So why would, why would, what is the big driver towards people repealing this?
I think it's by and large, I think it's very much a political issue of that it is seen on the right as federal overreach. That, if you recall, what really promulgated these standards was the Race to the Top Initiative. So Race to the Top equals the Obama Administration equals the Common Core state standards. And the irony is, the Common Core state standards did not come from the Obama Administration. They actually came from the National Council of Governors, who, at the time, they came out, was chaired by Jeff Bush. So, a good consortium of the Governors Association that thought up this consortium and having national standards was ironically Republican.
So, is this, but this ballot initiative is a state-level ballot?
It is.
So, we had this conversation before, and keep me honest in terms of my recollection, my understanding is, we had a real big challenge going from MCAS to Common Core because we were concerned that at the time, we were in the process of revamping MCAS anyways and taking it to the next stage, and Common Core, we kind of felt was, in and of itself, a little bit of a step back. And then my understanding is that they revised the Common Core, they revised the approach, it actually took on much of what we were gonna do anyways, in terms of the MCAS evolution.
The Massachusetts standards, along with the California standards, were the two states that were the largest drivers in developing the Common Core standards. So, you know, and some of the background notes and the information that I shared with you, I think there has been a group, and I think we talked about this last year, particularly out of the Pioneer Institute, that have put here in Massachusetts into the public domain that somehow the Common Core standards, or the two thousand and eleven curriculum frameworks, are less rigorous, less demanding than the previous two thousand and four Massachusetts standards. In my opinion, and I think the opinion of people who are in the know, the opinion of the State Superintendents Association, that's not accurate at all. And realize, you know, again, this is very much a national conversation that's occurring. We see it occurring at the statewide level, but I think it's really important on a lot of fronts to have the conversation here within Massachusetts.
So, what would it, so let's say this was, clearly, if it's to fail, we continue down the path we're going to.
Correct.
If it passed, how would it change what we're doing from a curriculum perspective and the higher degree of standards we're putting into our curriculum every day, every week, every month? I wouldn't see that changing. Change it.
Tough question. You know, I, we just have been spending the last three years rewriting all of our curriculum, maps and guides to align to the new standards. So it would take years to roll back to realign to old standards anyway, so it's not like the next day there would be a shift. But ultimately, when it comes down to the assessments, it would be, it would be a realignment if we were forced to do that.
Let me give a really sloppy analogy, as I'm looking at your laptop. You've got in front of you now a MacBook and, I believe, an iPhone, okay? The best analogy that I could give is, I could say, okay, can you come, the next meeting that we have in March, I want you to come, Phil, with your BlackBerry and your IBM PS2 laptop, you know, the ones that were like eight inches thick. You could, you could come, and you could probably email off your BlackBerry and so on, but it would represent a step backwards.
I understand. Okay. Other questions?
So, if we talk about, like, disseminating information to the arching communities, how you propose that we do something? Is it something that there could be a link to information on the Common Core standards?
We could have information available about the standards and about the work. And I think we should use, particularly the closer we get into the fall, you know, we've got some remarkably talented teachers, remarkably talented administrators within the district. And even if it's just a short, ten-minute, fifteen-minute vignette of how have these new sets of standards changed your practice? I think...
As an example, so at the Keys to Clough and at Memorial, so I did, you know, a presentation for parents on demystifying the Common Core, 'cause, you know, out on Facebook, can you see, like, oh, you know, these things all out there, and just kind of saying, you know, this, trying to go through, this is what the standards are all about, these are the main shifts that we've been doing in instruction. But I think even more than me, I mean, I think that was helpful for parents, and I tried to give them, you know, strategies, but I think having teachers really highlight and talk about the differences and all the great things happening really kind of speaks to the power of our current standards. I just try to inform, I mean, we talk about the Common Core, but really, we're talking about our Massachusetts standards. You know, we drove a lot of that, that Common Core, but it's really about, you know, reverting our standards back many of the years. And I think that comes from a lot of just misinformation that's out there, so...
Well, I don't think people realize you're actually taking two steps back, not one. And I think people don't understand kind of where the Common Core has gone and the development of it in terms of the last four to six years and kind of how it's been influenced by the different pieces that have come out of this state in California, as you said. And I think maybe what would be beneficial is to take maybe the presentation that you have with demystifying it, and maybe we can put that presentation out there similar to what we did on demystifying the budgeting process and understanding if we do state budgeting in terms of education. So I think that may be helpful, to at least give people a veteran-informed approach towards how it is.
Sure.
And put it in plain English, I think sometimes we've continued to use the term "Common Core", but it's evolved in its meaning over the last six years. And while I'm not one for the federal government necessarily driving our standards, specifically in our state, where we actually have tremendous amount of progress beyond what the federal government has had, I think at a state level, I think it's important for us to continue to move forward.
I think a lot of times when you talk about the Common Core, it's very abstract. People don't really know what it is. I certainly didn't know what it was three years ago, and have become more informed from just conferences and, you know, your information that you share with us, Joe. But I think that most parents and most people need it to be demystified because it's just a very abstract concept. And a lot of times, like, when we said we adopted the Common Core, I just said, okay, this is our new state standards, you know, four years ago, whatever, when I became aware. So it just seemed like, but then I have heard a lot of back and forth with teachers who like it, not necessarily in our district, but just in general. Teachers who like it, teachers who don't like it, whether it's a step forward, whether it's a step back. So I think there was a lot of controversy surrounding it. But what I've learned about it personally in the past year is, it seems like a giant step forward.
So, for people watching, that Maureen's presentation on demystifying the Common Core is on my website at the Keys to Clough.
Okay.
So people can click on that.
Click on it.
If you have questions.
That's great.
Just, like, I, Maureen Brigham, I teach fourth grade at Clough, and, you know, I think in Massachusetts, we have been so far ahead of the game, yeah. And so I think, you know, when you hear things online from other parents in other states, the Common Core has really rocked their world and changed the way that they do business in the classroom. But for us, I mean, like, for example, in math, some of the standards have changed. It's really been, like, some tweaks along the way. And in addition, the state adopted the Common Core, but also looked at it and looked at a couple of things that were missing and added standards to make sure that that rigor was there and was up to our level. So our version of Common Core is slightly different than other states, so there's that. I think in ELA, you know, that as teachers, that's where we've really realized a big shift. But you hear about math on Facebook all the time, but, you know, I think it's minor changes in math.
Other thoughts, questions?
No, I think getting information out is a great idea, especially if it's a valid initiative.
All right. Moving on there?
Okay.
We want to administrator comments.
Okay. First, we've got Jan Gallagher here to share some great news about the Clough robotics team.
It's just so nice, it goes nicely with the arts. So when we talk about STEAM, how our goal has been, you know, our initiative has been to try to do more with the students on STEAM, the science, technology, engineering, math, and art. We do a lot in academics during the day, but we also want to get kids involved before and after school to make it part of their life and to, you know, get them really thinking because there's new standards, if you go to the next slide of the page, the next generation of standards, you can see, again, it ties into what Mrs. Brigham was saying with the depth of our Common Core standards, but it's more about asking questions, investigating, really taking it to the next step. And we're working hard on that. And this past September, we were able to, through a youth grant, able to get the VEX robotics into our schools. We bought two kits and got them in to, for our after-school enrichment programs. And I have two staff members, Cora Gaylor and Denise DeRosa, who have done a fabulous job. But I want to give kudos to the inspiration, the children. And I thank you for allowing me to speak on the success and the inspiration of these children, one of which is, well, it's the Orffs' child, so we got this double-dipping kit with AI and the science. But their group, Vicky Crisante and her husband, John Luca, have been very active with the robotics. She's actually on my school council, and she's the one who brought this idea. We were talking about with our school goals, how can we do more for our children? How can we get the girls more involved? How can we, you know, so we do a lot of after-school programs before with math classes and the art club, and we wanted something more. So she had started talking to us about the robotics. And she had a group of students, who happened last year to be second graders, and they started on the robotics, and they meet weekly, and they have to do everything. I mean, it's problem-solving, it's designing, it's programming. Katie Jordan does a lot of after-school programming and classes on coding. And this is what they're working on, very innovative, very, you know, hands-on, critical thinking, communicating with each other, collaborating. So these students, I think it's on the next one, they actually competed back last year, and they didn't move on to qualify, but they started very involved in this. And I asked them to come to the second grade, because they were in second grade at the time. One of our standards is also communicating, again, public speaking and going up there. So I figured they'd feel comfortable talking with their peers. So they spoke to the second graders about what they're doing and what the programming is about. And at the end, I used it as a time to, like, survey them, to say, like, would you be interested if we could get robotics in our school? And they were, like, overwhelmingly, like, yeah, yeah, yeah. And that motivated us to go for the grant. So this year, this group of students, and I have their names on the next one, but they had a tournament at the Boston University Academy, and they won three awards. So they got the programming award, the robot skills award, and then the STEM research. So two of it had to do with the programming and the coding and actually getting their machines to work and have the brain, you know, focused aware it was gonna go, pick up the blocks and move it. And they're competing against many, many other teams. So they won three awards. The third one, which was the STEM research, is, they had to choose a topic and had to do research, and their topic was great, because I called my mother afterwards and I told her she was wrong all these years, because it said, "Does coffee's gonna grow." And so what we did is, we, if you go to the next one, these are the students, Max Crisante, Caleb Clark, Izzy Nicholson, Avery Orff, Connor Gleason, Gavin K. Pooter, Dylan McGazum, and Dylan Moore. I asked them if they would come and present, and this time, we talk about growing, feeling more confident about what they're doing and passionate about it. They presented to every student, grades K through four. So I had grade two and three, and you go to the next one, too. So they got up on stage, and they first presented to all the second and third graders. So you're talking about one hundred and sixty-five, one hundred and seventy-five kids. They showed them how to work, they talked about their experience. They, then they did kindergarten in first grades, and then the last group was fourth. So for children third grade to get up there and to be able to communicate... So for children third grade to get up there and to be able to communicate this, and they had these kids, like everybody, like their question time, I actually had to shut them down because there were so many questions. Every kid had their hand raised, they were asking about it, they were excited, but it's these kids working together that got the kids excited. And, you know, our enrichment classes have been full, we want to do more, we're hoping to, you know, get some funds so we can actually do more of the competitions. So they had the competition at BU and the next one was actually this past Saturday. And unbelievable, they won, and I just got this information Saturday night because I was like, Vicki, tell me, I was trying to go myself, that they've won. They're called the Mighty Minions, by the way, and they won, for this one, they won, let me get it, they won the programming. The programming award, and they came in fourth and eighteenth. And because they won the programming award, they're now qualified for the VEX World, which is in Kentucky, April twentieth to twenty-third. And that's like, last year they had over eight hundred different teams that participated. But this is like the universe is going here. I mean, no, it is, if you look on, it'll say the universe is going to the world, these kids are going and our kids won. Now, it goes, the category they were in was in from grades three to eight, so they were the youngest there. And the ones who beat them were the middle school hockey team group. But they beat all these kids older, I mean, whoa, it's incredible, and the program award. So hopefully they go to Kentucky, it's like eight hundred and fifty dollars just to register. So if anybody has any innovative ideas of how to, you know, cover that, that would be great. But it is such an experience for them, but they're the reason we have the enrichment program. They're the reasons that Alice has also tapped onto this and has just ordered a couple of robotics because they're going to bring it up to middle school, right?
As a matter of fact, we now have robotics through enrichment at Memorial, Misco, and we bought Clough another robot.
Yes.
Yeah, because it's so great, it's such a great thing.
So I feel like it's just moving us forward, but we're empowering the children. And, you know, we could have told them it was great, it was great, but for the kids to hear it from the kids. And, you know, I just want to thank the Crisantes have been great and the parents who have supported these kids. And I just couldn't be prouder to see them up there on stage, I couldn't have done that, I mean, it was amazing. So thank you for letting me share it with you, I'm very, very proud of them.
That's great.
Very cool. Cool. And one of the girls got off the bus today, she gave me this book, which says, it's good to be a minion. She's one of the ones, so I'm going to hold this forever because that's really sweet.
So when is the competition?
It's April twentieth to the twenty-third in Kentucky.
In Kentucky, wow.
Kentucky, because that's where we all want to go.
Yeah, like Kentucky.
Yeah. Hopefully they'll get to go because what an experience for them.
Are they planning on it, do you know, Jan, like are they going to do some fundraising?
They're trying to think of, I told Mick, yes, it with her, try to come up with some fundraising activities because I just think it's not just these eight children. I mean, I really think that our whole school, I mean, the kids were walking around after they presented, they were like, you know, good luck, good luck, you know. They were asking them questions, when I had to stop them, they kept asking questions at lunch, at recess, I mean, they were like celebrities and they wanted, they wanted to do it. And so I think that them going further, you know, I said it on my announcements today and even kids were high-fiving them and it's just, it's awesome. And it's just something that we don't normally do for acknowledgement, you know. So to have something like this that's new in the area and for us to already be ahead of so many schools that aren't doing it is huge.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Okay, and then second, we have our Director of Technology Integration, Anthony Amtrino, who's here to talk about some of the programming teams run recently. I think for the holidays, right, Anthony, for our parents and getting the word out there.
Yeah, so, so last year, we started, do you mind if this is a second? Last year, we started doing these kind of parent workshops where we invited parents to come in to hear about some of the things that we're doing with technology in the classroom. Last year, we offered them twice a month, once in the morning and once in the evening time, and we found that they were kind of both kind of attended in the same amount of attendance at each of the sessions. So this year, when I started designing the workshops, which started in December, I decided to have them during the school day so we could have a lot of teacher participation, a lot of student participation. Where we'd have like panels of teachers and students kind of talking about their experiences with it and guidance staff and administration above too. So, so since December, we've had three of these, I call them Cafe Digitale, just to kind of, there's coffee involved, so, and, you know, digital coffee doesn't really sound so great. So I took my Italian roots and changed it to Cafe Digitale. So we had three of these meetings, and the first one was a student panel of some of our eighth-grade students at Misco, talking about their experiences with technology and how it's kind of changed their educational experience and what's better about it, what's tricky about it, things like that. So they were really great, and what I've done with each of these events is recorded them. So the first two events are audio recording, so you can listen to the panel discussions for each of those. And then the second one is audio with some visual slides and some kind of like a screencast to kind of show you where to go and talk about iPads and whatnot. So these are all available on the One-to-One Learning website, so you can click on these and listen to them. So like I said, the December tenth one was a student panel on technology and working for them. And then on January fourteenth, we were able to get some counselors from the high school and some guidance counselors from the middle school to talk about distraction, multitasking, time management, and how, from their perspective, working with students and parents, how using the iPads more has, again, been the kind of pros and cons to it, what's been helpful and what's been a little bit tricky with it too. So that was a nice conversation to have, there's a lot of back and forth between the parents and the guidance counselors to learn how, what tools are available, what tools they're suggesting to students, what tools the teachers are suggesting to students to help keep them focused, non-tasked, and organized. And then this past one was about accessing info through iParent. So we had our parents who said, is that administrator come in and kind of do a walkthrough of how to sign up your student for iParent? How to sign up you as a parent for iParent? And then we also talked about the different levels of access, how students are able to access iStudent to have information about their grades and attendance record and all sorts of kind of information about their, their life at school. So again, so like I posted these podcasts, screencasts, whatever you'd like to call it, up here on the One-to-One Learning website, and then we've got three more planned for the rest of the year. The next one, actually, we're going to change locations, we're going to be up at NIPMUC and have some of the NIPMUC staff students that work, talk with me and Jen Lee, who's the technology teacher up at the high school, about the importance of maintaining a positive digital footprint and what are some tips and techniques that students can do to kind of help make sure that they're, they have a good positive digital footprint out there and how that can be helpful in terms of applying for scholarships and college admissions and things like that. And then two more after that, one on social media, and then I plan to get into town librarians in on May twelfth to talk about accessing library books through the iPad and what services are available throughout town libraries. So it's been, it's been a good, positive kind of outreach thing, I feel like, for the community members. I know Diane, you've come in and joined us, not as well-tempered, I feel like, as I would have hoped, but putting, it's hard during the middle of the day for parents to get there, I know that. So that's why I think it's important to record the sessions and put the information up on the website so people can access it when it's needed for them. So something definitely will continue. I've also made myself available to the PTOs and plans that we go to the Clough PTO meeting at the next one to talk about the iPad use in middle school, especially for fourth-grade parents or, you know, have some questions and want to learn more about it. And then we'll provide more information too at the Step Up Night in May, I think two of us are.
Any questions or anything about that?
I think it'll be great to see, you know, it's good to see that we're starting to put these pieces out there, it'll be great to see more, specifically as we get the technology strategy kind of out there in play. And we start to work through that because I know that will kind of ramp us to the next level. And, you know, it's good to understand that. The other, the question I have is when you look at this and you look at kind of the information that starts to get shared, it'd be great to be able to track, are we seeing greater adoption? Are we seeing greater usage? Are we seeing greater effectiveness of the technology as it's being there? And if we have measures around that, being able to track some of those things, so as we get either on an annual or a semi-annual kind of basis, we have an ability to kind of understand the trends that are going on and understand the impact that it's having, that would be a great thing.
Absolutely, and I think that's part of the discussions that we've been having, it's part of the technology plan revision process. That's been one of the key things that we've talked about is always taking a kind of a step back and assessing how things are going and how that they can be improved and how it can be more helpful to, you know, the parents, teachers, and the students to make it as effective as possible.
That's great. All right, thank you, Brown.
Okay, and last but certainly not least, we have our high school administrative team here to share some news that's very, very positive and really a well-long overdue reputation, so I'll turn it over to Jan.
Thank you, I know you have a packed agenda, so thank you for the chance to be on the agenda tonight. Not sharing new news, I know it's been covered in the Crier and covered in the Milford Daily News and I've heard about it, every meeting I'm at, I mention it, the first thing I do. Because I'm so proud and excited for Mary Ann Moran, who's been, has been the state Assistant Principal of the Year. Steal Jan's turn, should be the universe. I worked with Mary Ann for fifteen-ish years or so, about that much time. I knew her first as a teacher and then as a department chairperson, and for the last five years, we've worked together and shared in leadership of NIPMUC regional. This is a real source of pride for me because I get to see every day the phenomenal work that she does for our students, our teachers, our school. As a classroom teacher, as a department chair, some of the qualities that distinguish her were her capacity to have high expectations for all kids. If you were in her room, you were going to work and you knew it and you liked it, or at least you acted like you liked it. She had the capacity to take really complex concepts and make them easily understandable in different ways for different people. And in working with different kids, she always went above and beyond in order to meet their needs. Those traits, I think, have translated wonderfully to her role as an associate principal. She's gone from having an impact on the one hundred kids you'd see in math classes every year to now having an impact on the six hundred and twenty kids we have in the school. And I think important too, having an impact on other administrators across the state, which has impacts on their kids. She's really become a statewide leader and a respected source, if you're looking to steal a good idea, you talk to Mary Ann Moran. In our school specifically, the work with One-to-One Learning, the implementation of their advisory program, our work to bring RTI, our STEM programs, humanities programs. She's been absolute partner and a leader in all of those efforts. I say if it's good at NIPMUC, it's got her fingerprints on it. And she's been such a tireless supporter of kids and teachers, and I'm happy for her to get this award. It's been a real privilege for me in my career to work with other recipients of this award, so I hold it in very high esteem from Maureen Cohen, who's a national finalist for Assistant Principal of the Year for Massachusetts, my mentor, Joan Scribner, who's an Assistant Principal of the Year, Pat Larkin, who's the position I took when I was an AP in NIPMUC, and Paul Dagle, who's Principal of the Year. I've worked with some exceptionally talented administrators, and Mary Ann is certainly a key part of that group. So proud to recognize her on behalf of our kids and her teachers, I offer her not only our thanks, but our sincere congratulations. She's headed off to Florida to the NASP conference at the end of the week, where she will be formally recognized and hopefully bring me back like a T-shirt. I went to Florida, how I got my principal is this T-shirt. No, but not the joke, she's a phenomenal partner to work with, I feel privileged every day and happy to recognize you.
Thank you, and thanks to all of you, it has been an absolute privilege receiving this award. You know, I do a lot of work beyond the walls of NIPMUC at the state level and working with other assistant principals and principals, and that's really exciting part of this. I didn't always know that administration was going to be on my career path, honestly. I've been in education for sixteen years and actually started in elementary and Spanish and then went curriculum and instructional technology and then went middle school math and then went high school math and then went high school administration. So it's been quite a journey, I would say, in the last sixteen years. I'm very thankful that I have found this home at NIPMUC and then Domenantin, I think that they're two amazing communities to be a part of, not only to work in, but also to live in. So I'm thankful for that opportunity to work here. I'm thankful to have John as a mentor and a leader at NIPMUC and to work with some outstanding educators and leadership across the district and NIPMUC as well. I always say that when you surround yourself with the best, that you can be your best, and I feel like everyone here has helped me get to that point. And it's a reflection of the work that's taking place in the community truly. Nothing I do at school or in my job is alone, you know, it's always for the kids and the kids' best interest at heart, but it's a team effort, you know, nothing takes place in isolation in education. So I'm thrilled to be headed off to Florida, to leave this place behind for a couple of days. I will make sure all my emails are forwarded to John, so whatever he needs, he's got for a couple of days. No, but truly, you know, all of the Assistant Principals of the Year from all the states across the country are going down there. And they design custom professional development for us as well as being recognized, but it's truly an opportunity to network with those other people and bring back kind of the best ideas to the district to benefit teachers and educators, but also just to benefit our kids and figure out what's going on across the country. So thank you, everyone, I appreciate this, and it's a great honor, so thank you.
Least you could do is bring an umbrella back from one of the trips. All right, moving on. Superintendent Evaluation, subcommittee.
Okay, so we met a couple of weeks ago in the process of superintendent evaluation. It follows a pretty regular cycle every year, there's a self-assessment that Joe does, and then he does some analysis and goal setting, begins the implement, shares the plan with the committee, implements the plan, and then we have our mid-cycle review, which is what we just did about two and a half weeks ago. And so it's just a step in the path, and he's moving right along. He sets goals for student learning, professional practice, as well as district improvement goals, and then we kind of just track his progress. And then we'll come together again during the summer and then present back to the greater public on the evaluation for the year of September. So, Joe, moving, turn it on, Grace.
Okay, so then the next order of business is the Task Force for School Committee Evaluation.
Me again. So we met last week, Pam, Dorothy, and I, to start a little bit of public outreach to Domenantin and Acton communities. Really to just kind of start some investigation, to see how the public wants to interface with the school committee, to receive information, to provide information, to have questions answered. And so we had our first meeting with Melissa Orf, who was the only one who attended, but it was rescheduled. So we have another meeting coming up on March fifteenth, Tuesday, March fifteenth, it's going to be at the Domenantin Senior Center. So we just scheduled that and we're going to try to get the word out there. So if anybody from the public wants to join in, it will be the three of us representing again and just trying to question the public to see what kinds of things we could be doing that would be helpful to disseminate information to them, or if they need to come to us, what's the best tool for them to have access to us. So first steps, and we'll see how it all goes. So like I said, March fifteenth, Tuesday, March fifteenth, seven o'clock at the Domenantin Senior Center will be our next meeting.
There'll be refreshments.
There will be refreshments, because we figured if you bring food, they will come, hopefully.
That's great to hear. So the next step then, moving right along, presentation of fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, budget.
Are you adverse to just skipping over and going to the approval of the field trips while the Apple TV is rebooting?
None of that at all. Let's do the approval of the NIPMUC field trips. Softball spirit to North Smithfield High School.
I gave you homework, a lot of homework, thank you for all the reading and reviewing. Got it, four trips we're proposing, four out-of-state trips, Sergeant.
That's okay.
Softball trip to North Smithfield, we have a club and activities trip for the Mala UN. We have also a curriculum trip to Ellis Island and our second Dominica trip through Operation Malicia. So I know I gave you a lot of information, I didn't know if you had questions for me, or are you looking for clarification about any of the trips? As you look it over, I'll say I'm really thankful for teachers who are coming up with these plans and organizing these trips. I think they're really valuable learning experiences, the Ellis Island trip is brand new for us, great opportunity to get our Latin American experience students combine the Twenty-Fifth Century Skills students, taking actually the principles from World Challenge, which is another set of trips that you've approved, and applying them to authentic, real-world learning experience, kind of thing that Chris talked about at the beginning.
John, when is the Ellis Island trip?
So the Ellis Island trip is the spring trip. So the Ellis Island trip is the spring trip for 21st Century Skills, and they're cooperating with Latin American Experience students. So in the fall, the kids went to Block Island. It's a small cohort, about 12 or 13 kids, doing 21st Century Skills. What they do is they plan a trip, plan the budget, transportation, how they're going to spend their time, apply some of the soft skills, they're contacting people in advance, and we're going to make arrangements. Everyone has a leadership role in organizing the trip, and then they carry it out. And so what we're doing is, with such a success in the fall, we're taking this spring trip where they're headed to Ellis Island. They're exploring different cultures, and they're combining with Latin American Experience students who have been focusing on getting outside the walls of Nittuck in order to connect with people who are native Spanish speakers, in order to extend that curriculum to some real-life learning. So it's a natural opportunity. You have two world language teachers who saw this chance to team up. I think what we have here is a template for the kinds of trips and learning activities that we'd like to see expanded moving forward.
So it's a one-day trip?
These are all one-day trips, except for the Dominica, which is the same as the last time. It's a couple of weeks, two-week trip.
I think the Model UN, is that, is this the first year?
Model UN has a long history at Nittuck, but it died out for a while. We have a new teacher with us in the History Department, who from the very beginning was passionate about reinviting that program. We've got kids who are interested.
Is it an excellent program?
It is. There are a lot of competitions around. Tried to find one that was an easy access point for the years because our kids hadn't participated and also not a huge price point. Some of them can be very expensive.
So I'm not familiar with Model UN. Can you tell me a little bit about it?
Sure. Model UN is an opportunity where you really engage in civics learning and applying your history learning. So what you do is you attend a conference where you take on the role of a country or a diplomat, and then in a UN setting, have the responsibility for making your case on behalf of your country. You're assigned that country upon entry, so you have a chance to do research, collaborate with others. It's a real chance to put civics and history learning to work on a real issue.
To add to it, you're given various different topics that are relevant to the current time period.
Okay, so can you give an example of a topic?
You'd be like global warming.
Okay.
So maybe you're the island of Fiji and have to deal with the rise in Pacific, and so you deal with global warming, and you're part of it. You have to work within a committee, you pass resolutions, and you work about, you learn about the process of how the UN actually works, and you learn about the different committees that are there that actually do different aspects. It might be something maybe involved with World Bank and financing, if there's different areas, maybe capital lending and some other things. So it's a very interesting experience.
You were in Model UN, too.
I did go.
It leaves you with that passion.
But normally in an election year, they don't, we didn't do the Model UN, we did the, I'm trying to remember what the other one was, but it was kind of geared towards the kind of the election. And so, you know, you would come as a state delegate, and you'd deal with states, the issues involving like going to the Republican or the Democratic National Convention.
The History Department, too, did a similar trip that's not on the document today, is playing the trip to the Kennedy Institute, where they have a model in the Senate, somebody signs in the Senate, kids come in, take the position, act as diplomats, argue a position, and then hopefully pass a bill or not by the end of the session. So those are the kinds of experiences we're going to give our kids. One point I should mention, and I know I noted this on your information sheet, the Dominica trip, what the kids need to do through the advisor gen two is book a flight. So the cost was estimated around $3,200, but it's all dependent upon the flight cost, and that can vary. So they have a range that they provided, and what an international flight typically goes for, but I would say 3,200 to 3,500 is a pretty fair estimate.
Great. So can we vote on these as just one big package of trips? Okay, thank you. Could I get a motion to approve the Nittuck Regional Proposed Out-of-State Field Trips?
Make a motion to approve the Nittuck Regional Proposed Out-of-State Field Trips. Second.
Further discussion?
I'm going to go all for them.
All right. All those in favor? All right, opposed? There's your next.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, back to the budget.
All right. The Apple Gods were good to me tonight. Okay, here's where we are, here's where we are right now with regard to the first pass of the FY '17 budget. Both the Budget Subcommittee and myself and Jay and the admin team have been hard at work on this, really since about Thanksgiving, and this is where we are right now. As we do every year, there's goals that are really the foundation of our budget process. First and foremost is to maintain the forward momentum, and I'll talk about some of the specifics of our forward momentum as articulated in our strategic plan. Secondly, as always, this will always be a goal, to, you know, find savings wherever we can and to maximize those efficiencies. And you'll see very shortly, I think we've done that very successfully in this initial proposal. And third, to look at this beyond just FY '17 and have a multi-year plan. So we're in a, the state of the district is very, very strong right now, and, you know, first and foremost, it's about our people, our staff, our community, all of our stakeholders really working together. And I think, you know, it would be an understatement to say that last spring's override was really a watershed moment for this district and putting us really on the right track. But if you look at the last three or four budget cycles that coincide with our strategic plan, you see all of those bullet points of how this district, in a very strong, deliberate fashion, has moved forward. You know, we're in a very good place with regard to our class sizes. We've implemented universal free full-day kindergarten. We've got a lot of supports in our place for our students through the inclusion model and most recently the provision of and restoration of literacy teachers at the elementary level. You know, we've talked tonight about things that we're doing with regard to STEM at all levels. And we've restored and gotten a lot of programs, athletics, extra and co-curricular, back to the place where they really need to be. And also, you know, kind of tying in where Anthony, we made a very significant investment in technology in this district. So we've accomplished quite a bit in the last three to four budget cycles within this district through the generous support of our community. What we've achieved, I think we have four very high-performing schools. You know, we recently posted and sent out to parents links to something known as the annual school report cards, something that the department that requires us to do. If you look at them, and again, I think sometimes we're our own worst critics, and we tend to hyper-focus on what our deficiencies are, and that's not necessarily a bad thing. I think, you know, that's part of the cycle of continuous improvement. But if you look in the continuum of how we rank statewide, Clough and Memorial are in the 81st percentile statewide, Misco Hill's in the 79th percentile, and Nittuck's in the 84th percentile, when you compare us looking at our MCAS and our accountability scores statewide. So we're doing extremely well. We've talked about the past, you know, we found out right after the holidays that Nittuck is a commendation high school, one of only 13 in the entire state, due to not only high achievement, but also high sustained growth on MCAS. Also, within the last three years, Nittuck has been honored as an AP Honor Roll School. I know John has spoken extensively about the tremendous growth. I think, John, it's at least threefold as far as the number of students taking AP courses, but also achieving qualifying scores. And then we also continue to celebrate the many successes that our Spanish Immersion Program enjoys district-wide. And I know Jan and I had an opportunity not too long ago to have Clough, a celebration at Clough, being the National School of the Year, as recognized by the Consulate General of Spain. So there's, you know, those are just a few things without a lot of deep thought as far as the many successes we've had within our district. And again, it comes back to all of the stakeholders working together and the remarkable support that we've had from the community in supporting our annual budget. So in building the budget every year, what's the first thing that you've got to look at? You've got to look at enrollment, okay? So two lines of data here. First, you see the enrollment, the official October 1 enrollment this year is 2,322 students. We're projecting 56 fewer students for next year. And again, it's that trend of birth data, okay? So next year's kindergarteners will be, were born in 11, and I'll show you the chart in a few slides. I think I've got it down to 13, not bad. But we're seeing a spike as far as a downward spike of babies born in 10 versus 11. But there could be a couple of things to offset that. As we do in determining our local assessments, we break down the percentage of how many kids are from Mendon, how many kids are from Upton. Upton's at roughly 55%, Mendon's at roughly 45%. We've been having this year swing from year to year. This for FY '17, Upton is upper percent, Mendon's down a percent, okay? So what do we have in this budget? This is, in my opinion, a very modest conservative budget of $32,344,137. It represents about a 1.6% increase over this current year. It does maintain level services, and by level services, I mean keeping the existing programs and services that we have in place this year, maintaining consistent class sizes. But as I'll talk about briefly, there are also some smart targeted investments built in, again, things that are aligned with our strategic plan. So what are some of the operational budget drivers? Obviously, your, the first two things you look at are what are the salaries and what are the benefits? That's where oftentimes some of your largest drivers are. Next year will mark the third year of contracts with all five of our associations. The cost of living adjustment is 1.5%. So if you were to take all of our associations and include salary increases, it translates to about $143,000, which is less than 1%. Keep in mind, that also takes into account, we've got right now four retirees, two of the positions will be replaced and two will not be. So it lowers your salary line, but the overall increase is about $143,000. Our largest driver is going to be health insurance. Right now, we've budgeted it at about a 10% increase, which translates to a little under We also, for the second straight year, have a fairly significant increase in our assessment from the Worcester County Retirement Association. Those are for our employees that are not part of the state retirement system. But offsetting some of that, at least, we've got a $28,000 decrease in what we're budgeting for unemployment. Our transportation costs are very reasonable. We are in the second year of a two-year rollover on our busing contract for regular transportation, so that's a horrendous, about a $30,000 increase for 1.95%. We have overall a decrease in special aid transportation and also a decrease in student services largely by some projected decrease in out-of-district tuition. We've got some nice efficiencies, some nice savings in the area of energy in our building and grounds lines. We're looking at roughly about $57,000 decrease due to our net metering agreement and our solar agreement going into place. And then we've locked in for oil for here for Misco Hill at, what is it, Jay, about a $1.71 a gallon? So that translates to about $24,000 in just that line alone. And kind of offsetting it, but I think it's a smart investment, is an additional investment of $10,000 in field maintenance, specifically looking at reseeding and additional fertilizing and upkeep of fields, both here at Misco and also at the high school. Can we get some additional money into the technology line? All right, hold on. Okay, so I think what we're going to do is we're going to go old-school.
We'll try, though, I know on mine, let me see if I can get it up there.
Yeah, that'd be great. But can you connect? For some reason, I'm not connecting.
It's actually here on mine.
Oh, amen. I'm back.
You're back, never mind. Just take a break. Because I could actually use the hard wire, really old-school.
That's what I was going to do. Okay. So another driver of technology, speak of the devil. So this is kind of a continuation of, and I just delineated what some of our major expenditures are in technology. We're in a place now, as far as the district, where the split is about 65, 35, as far as 65% of the iPads now are district-owned and 35% are owned by parents. So kind of keeping that game plan of continued support of district-owned tablets, planning for our class, we anticipate probably by 17, 18, we'll be at 100% ownership of all tablets. We also have continuation of our smart board leases for Misco for the math classrooms and also all at Clough and Memorial, and then also refreshing our desktop and laptop lease through Hewlett-Tacca. All of our teacher workstations now and also computer labs are five years old, so we will be refreshing those during the summer months, so that's built into this budget as well. As far as textbooks and instructional supplies, right now, we've got a fairly large committee of elementary and middle school teachers looking at a new mathematics textbook series, K through 6, ones that are aligned with the 2011 standard, so everything's just coming back to earlier agenda items. So we've got an amount, about $83,000 budgeted for that, and we hope to, within the next couple of months, come before the committee with a recommendation for your approval of a new K through 6 math program. We also have an additional $10,000 investment for some hands-on science materials, some kits to be used at the elementary level. And keep in mind that we had a fairly large chunk of money over the last couple of years for... for the Reading Wonders program and all the supplemental materials. So actually, the overall textbook line district-wide amongst the four schools is about $82,000 less than this current fiscal year. So you can see there, the total expenditures right now in this first past budget are about $505,000 additional than the current adopted budget this year. And you can see the major cost centers, that's the way that they're identified. And again, the largest driver, if you look under fixed charges, that $418,000, that represents the health insurance and also the Worcester County assessment. As far as our anticipated revenue, what we do is we use the set of numbers that we have right now, which is the governor's budget, which is known as the House One Budget. And right now, in Governor Baker's budget, there's an additional $20 per student, which translates to $55,695. The regional transportation amount is flat, so it's an additional, very, very small amount, it's about $15,000, but it's a flat reimbursement rate of 66%. And there's a slight improvement in our charter reimbursement for the simple reason that we've got less Mendon and Upton kids going to the two charter schools. So the total increase in state aid is about $93,000. Now, as far as the local assessments, a little bit of a fly in the ointment here. And the fly in the ointment is there's a fairly dramatic difference in the minimum local contribution to Upton versus Mendon. It's approximately 200,000 more to Upton than it is for Mendon. Realize, minimum local contribution, we have no control of that whatsoever. That's something that the state dictates to us, okay? So between the two communities, it's an additional $511,852. So, you know, and we'll discuss this more in-depth at the hearing, at the open budget hearing on March 14th. But realize, the minimum local contributions are driven by a lot of factors. They're driven by student enrollment within the regional school district, but also student enrollment at BBT. And also, another factor is how quickly each community is progressing towards its target share. If you recall during the override campaign, target share, you know, was a significant issue. This data that we have indicates that Mendon has more students going to BBT, relatively speaking, than Upton does this year because Upton's BBT assessment actually went down, Mendon's went up. And it also indicates that Mendon, by a slight factor, is progressing closer to its target share than Upton is. So those are two key factors that are determining the disparity in the minimum local contribution increase. If you recall, last fiscal year, Upton's MLC increase was only something like $34,000, whereas Mendon's was a horrendous $200,000. So it varies from year to year.
Does the distribution, though, of the student population actually impact this as well, I thought? So the fact is, last year Mendon was up a percent, Upton down a percent, this year it's the reverse.
Doesn't affect MLC at all. It's all based on capital income. It's based on, you know, how close they are to target share. It's a whole different set of formulas. It really doesn't have much to do with enrollment. It is by student, but the numbers there don't skew it enough.
And our third source of revenue is district. Instead of allocating $350,000 from E and D or excess and deficiency, we're projecting allocating $250,000. Due to our present balance, it was certified in the fall at, it was about $780 or so. So again, keeping that, you know, reasonable rainy day fund in the event that, you know, we had a substantial expense. So where we're anticipating revenue right now, again, right now matches the 1.59% increase at an additional $505,000. And again, the biggest piece is the disparity of an additional $163,000 from Mendon and an additional $348,000 from Upton. So if you look in your background notes, and I think I also presented them as a handout, these slides just represent what's on page three, just kind of breaking down the projected revenue by all the specific line items in state aid and our assessments to Mendon and also our assessments to Upton. I think as you can see, is the trend that we've had at least over the last two or three fiscal cycles, the debt service has been actually decreasing. So at this point, as we usually are, we still have some variables, both on the expenditure and the revenue sides. The biggest one is the health insurance. You know, we always go very much on the conservative side as far as budgeting at least initially 10%. That could change either way. And we've had some challenges as far as some of the claims. So we're still in the process of trying to work with our agent in the negotiation process with Harvard Pilgrim Health. We really, we strongly believe that the Baker budget is, represents definitely the floor of where we'll be. If last year is any indication, we probably will do better in the House and the Senate budgets, the House budget coming out in April and the Senate budget in May, probably slightly better on Chapter 70. And if there, hopefully, there can be a commitment to get regional transportation at least up to that 80% reimbursement rate. We still have some out-of-district tuitions that we're looking at. We've got some students who conceivably will be graduating. So things like that will finalize hopefully by April. And then we've got the issue of kindergarten enrollment, which is ongoing right now, both at Clough and Memorial. And just to show you, and what we get from NSDEC, who does our enrollment every year, is one of many graphs that looks like this. As you can see, along the horizontal or x-axis, you can see years in five-year spans. So the number on the top represents the child's birth and the number on the bottom years represents a year of enrollment. So that darker kind of blue turquoise chart represents the number of live births in Mendon and Upton from 2000 to, what's the last year, 2013? And then the line above it represents how many kids actually enrolled, Mendon and Upton kids enrolled at Clough and Memorial five years after they were born. So you can see, it's not exactly a perfect matching of the trend. So NSDEC's guidance to the district is if you were to look at a continuum of 10, 15 years' worth of data, you generally end up with 20 additional kids enrolling versus how many were born five years prior. So if you look at the, what happens from 2010, this year's kindergarteners, to 2011, you see a jump downward, okay? We've seen that in the past. It doesn't always necessarily follow the trend line. If you look at the data for 2009, 2013, you see from '07 to '08, it dipped way down. And then what actually happened to the kindergarten enrollment actually trended slightly upward. So we've got the live birth data, but then we also have a fairly substantial-sized housing development going in in Upton. We also have some new construction in Mendon. So it's still playing out. You know, I'm confident we'll definitively know around April 15th or so what exactly our kindergarten numbers will look like, but it's still very much in play. So, you know, it really comes down to this. I think we've been very successful in budgeting, building a sound budget that supports our strategic plan, and I think it really comes down to the vision. The vision of having a district that's known for excellent innovation and that cycle of continuous improvement. I'm very confident that this very conservative budget, right now at 1.59%, continues that forward momentum, continues the excellence, the innovation, and the cycle of continuous So some key upcoming dates, that first one might be in play with regard to locking in a rate. Again, we've got a few things to resolve with regard to some of the claims, so hopefully to have a favorable percentage that we can lock in FY17. We've got our open budget hearing coming up, what's that, three weeks from tonight, on the 14th? And then you see the dates for our town meetings and so on. So it's very challenging at this time of the year, you know, you don't have all of the data. I had the opportunity to present this to multi, the multi-board on Thursday night, and I think both communities are still kind of in a wait-and-see type approach to see how the revenue measures come in. So does anybody have any questions on anything like that?
Look at that. I think I just have one maybe point to make, and that is, you know, when you look at our budget right now and the $500,000 increase that you're talking about, you know, the majority of that increase is really driven from the insurance line item.
Absolutely.
And the health insurance and the retirement insurance of almost, you know, $430,000 that's there. So I think that's a significant impact that we haven't seen in the past. Clearly, I know, you know, the work that Jay, you're doing in terms of negotiating with our agents and so forth is, so we'll hopefully see what happens as that kind of moves forward. But beyond that, we continue to be very conservative across what we're doing. We'll see, we've got some meetings to go through, so.
We do.
Then it'll be a big, we welcome everybody and the public to come on March 14th to the open budget hearing. It's always a fun time had by all. Though Anthony isn't here, so I can't say we'll be serving coffee.
We could bring coffee.
We could bring coffee or snacks, so. And the public can ask all their questions and we truly do welcome it, so. We, you know, this is an open book, if you like to call it, so. All right, so correspondences. Don't think we have any. Other matters not anticipated by the committee within 48 hours, posting. Okay, I see none, seeing none. Future agenda items with the open budget hearing on the 14th, a little bit pre-St. Patrick's Day, so maybe people could come and get a little practice in for St. Patrick's Day. And then we're gonna have a discussion on school start times on the 28th and the school lunch revenue review on the 28th as well.
Chris, it would really be great to have your perspective for that conversation about school start times.
Try to get schools started at 5:00 AM.
You're making that.
We get out real early, though, that's nice.
Get out real early.
Get out at 11:00.
I appreciate it on a snow day, by the way. That was nice.
That's probably just not good.
All right. All right, on that note, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. I'm sorry, Mr. Yu.
All those in favor?
Hi.
We adjourn this meeting at 8:26. Thank you all for coming.